We have is the swearing of our oaths for our newly elected officials.
Okay, I will take you one at a time. Joel, let's start with you. You can stand right there. Raise your right hand, please. Pete, after me. I, Joe Zitzelberger.
I, Joe Zitzelberger.
Having been elected or appointed.
Having been elected or appointed.
To the office of village trustee.
To the office of village trustee.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of set office.
Of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Thank you.
Bill?
Can I just go yes?
Nope.[67.34][67.34](laughter). Is your certificate?
All right.
I, Bill Rannam.
I, Bill Rannam.
Having been elected or appointed.
Been elected or appointed.
To the office of village trustee.
To the office of village trustee.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of set office.
Of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Raise your right hand, please. I, Erin Moran.
I, Erin Moran.
Having been elected or appointed.
Having been elected or appointed.
To the office of village trustee.
To the office of village trustee.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of set office.
Of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next, we've got confirmation of open meeting compliance. Julie?
I have affidavits of posting for the agenda. Proof that the mailing was done to the property owners adjacent to the public hearing. And confirmation that the information was provided to the Wannakee Tribune.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have consent agenda. If anybody would like anything pulled or I'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve consent.
Motion by Bill Rannam to approve.
Second.
Second by Phil Williams. Any other comments? Call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. So, public comment is next. I know there's some people here for the Bowles Center consulting for that part of it that may not want to be here. Does anybody have any public comments that they'd like to make in regards to the Bowles Center? Otherwise, I'm going to move that we flip-flop those and do the presentation first before public comment. Any objection? Okay, Todd.
And if I could just note, we have, there is, sir, is the seat next to you available? There's, I see four seats in here where there's room. So if folks want to come on in, we've got four spots. And then after the Bowles Center is done, there'll be five leaving from there, maybe a couple other committee members. There'll be another five or six seats after that, so. I'm going to stick these back here. Don't worry, remote won't make you sit.
Are there any other comment sheets?
The spotlight hat seat.
Any other comment sheets?
One more seat over here? Anybody? Here's a special spot just.
So I'm going to just introduce, actually, you know what, they're going to do the job of briefly introducing the work, but I can say that over the past six months or so, maybe longer, it's been really a pleasure to engage the Bowles Center. They're probably, you're going to explain how the Bowles Center, what you are and all that. But this is an extension of the village's work that's been going on for seven years now related to development of our creative economy. And if creative economy doesn't make sense to you, don't worry, I know we've worked a perfected slide in their presentation that works to kind of explain that further. So, I don't want to take much more away from Jaren and Sarah's presentation, so go for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Hi, everyone. My name is Jaren Bernstein. With me is Sarah Blubis. We are second-year MBA candidates, soon-to-be graduates of the Bowles Center for Arts Administration, which is located at the Wisconsin School of Business at University of Wisconsin-Madison. We have a couple of our classmates with us, Abby and Chris, as well as our center director, Sherry Wagner-Henry. For the past eight or so months, the past academic year, we've been working with the village of Wannakee to strategize about the next phase of the village's creative economy initiative. And specifically, we were charged with thinking about what a potential separate entity could or should look like that can carry on the work that's been conducted in the village for the past several years into the future. So I'll tell you a little bit about our project's scope. So, we split our work up into three phases. The first phase was this past fall, which focused on discovery and benchmarking. So we spent some time getting to know Wannakee and also taking a look around the region and the nation about what other communities are doing similar work as the creative economy initiative here in Wannakee. The second phase in January to March was focused on looking at Wannakee itself and talking with community members about the creative economy and what it means to them. And then finally, we've gathered all that information over the past two months and have put together a set of recommendations, which we are going to talk about today. We've, I should also mention that we've been working this whole time with a task force of Wannakee community members, as well as from some of the surrounding communities who have a stake in Wannakee. And they've been an invaluable help to us as we've tried to connect with the community members and provided advice. So I just want to thank all, there's some of them that are here today, and I just want to say thank you. So I'm now going to turn it over to Sarah, who's going to talk a little bit about the first few phases of our work.
So can you all hear me? I'm going to stand right here so I can see my slide. So we spent the first couple of months in our engagement with the village, just getting to know the community. We started with thinking about some key demographics about Wannakee, population, median income, things that we could start to use as points of comparison when we started looking at other communities, both across Wisconsin and across the nation. And then we started thinking about what are some of the strengths that Wannakee brings to the table. So in our first meeting with the task force that Jaren mentioned, we led the group through a discussion where we asked them to think about what are really the key strengths and assets that Wannakee has to offer. And we got a lot of really great feedback. Some of the things we heard are, the school district is really strong here, which I'm sure you all are very aware of. The sense of community pride in Wannakee is a real asset. And then there's also a lot of physical locations, like the depot pictured here, that really are unique to Wannakee and really put Wannakee on the map. We also sort of alluding to what Todd had mentioned earlier, this phrase, the creative economy, what does it really mean? We started to think about how we could define creative economy in terms of Wannakee. So with the task force and as a group and with Todd, we started thinking about what are all of the different individuals, organizations, activities happening in Wannakee that could be considered part of creative economy, because it is a very broad term. And some of those are included here, things like the Innovation Center, so places like that, businesses like Tormack and Millhouse Quilts. So in addition to artists and arts organizations, which are generally sort of the first thing that people think about when they hear the phrase creative economy, Wannakee also has craft breweries, organic farms, specialized manufacturers, and a whole other host of people, jobs, organizations that all hold into this idea of creative economy. So with the task force, we also started thinking about what other communities and organizations should we look at to start to get an idea of how we could build a structure or an entity that would work specifically here in Wannakee. We first asked them to think about Wisconsin. What are areas in Wisconsin, either communities or organizations, that they saw were doing really creative work or really inspiring to them? And they helped us brainstorm this list that's right here in terms of other communities in Wisconsin. As a group, we also thought about regionally and nationally what's happening in this work. So we looked at communities that are similar to Wannakee in terms of those key demographics in the metropolitan area, so looking at areas about the same size as Madison, and then trying to identify communities around that that might be doing interesting work, as well as specific organizations that are involved in creative economy work across the country. So there are a lot of different cities and communities that are thinking about some of these ideas, and we tried to pull in a lot of information about what some of those examples So ultimately, after all of our research, we really decided to focus on Wisconsin specifically. So we took kind of a deep dive into five communities and organizations that are represented here. These sort of provide a range of different types of organizations, so anything from a 501(c)(3) nonprofit to a municipal committee, varying degrees of size in terms of the communities, as well as, you know, what type of community it is. Is it sort of a metropolitan area, maybe a smaller rural area, really to just get a broad sense of what all is out there, and to help start ground us in our work in thinking about what could work specifically for Wannakee. We had the opportunity to engage with executive area staff members at all of, most of these organizations, and we even were able to take a tour of River Arts, which is out in South Prairie. We did that with the task force, so it was also a nice way to kind of engage the task force, get them outside of Village Hall, and get them thinking about a model that might work here in Wannakee. And really, you know, this work was to provide us an idea of what types of structures out there exist, what legal structures are engaged in this kind of work, what are some funding models if we were thinking about starting a new organization, how are municipalities involved, and how can we start to shape something that will meet the needs specifically of Wannakee? With that in mind, let's talk about what some of the needs are. So in the second phase of our process, we really got out into the community. We hosted a variety of different community conversations, both more focus group-type conversations. So we met with members of the business community, the arts community, faith community, as well as schools, to get a sense of what are some key issues that they're dealing with, what are some opportunities that they haven't had the chance to take advantage of yet, and think about ways that our initiative might start to benefit them. We also hosted two opportunities to engage the general public, and then have also done a variety of one-on-one conversations with organizations like Wannakee Community Band and Wannakee Community Foundation, a variety of different stakeholders in this work, just to get a better sense of, you know, what are you all facing right now, and how can we engage you in the creative economy going forward? So this word cloud was taken from transcriptions of all of those conversations. We've talked to about 60 people so far in this process, had pages and pages of notes, and this is kind of what was generated from that. So you can see we covered a lot of ground, and there were a lot of key themes and topics that rose to the surface. Among them, probably the primary key themes that we were looking at are here. Probably not a surprise to anyone in this room, there's a lot of really cool, creative stuff already happening in this community. We had the chance to learn all about how people both engage in that activity, but think about ways they might want to engage in it a little more, and maybe strengthen the relationship with a lot of those creative organizations and activities. We also heard a lot about kind of this key question, what makes Wannakee unique? A lot of organizations think about how can we use arts, culture, and creativity to sort of give our, or give our community a sense of identity and a sense of place, and that concept really came out in a lot of these conversations. Kind of along the same lines of so many creative activities happening here in Wannakee, we also heard that they, all of those activities kind of lack coordination. So I might be planning an event, and you might be planning an event, but we didn't know that they were happening. There's not necessarily any connection or any network for us to be able to talk to each other and figure out how we can help each other out and just participate in each other's events. And with that is sort of the general need for more marketing and advertising support. So as a community member, some people just didn't really know how they would find out about a lot of the activities, and they really wanted more of a platform or an ability to, you know, be able to attend a concert or a play, or figure out what's happening in terms of, you know, lone girls' business downtown and that kind of thing. So with all of that, we kind of took all of this information and started thinking about how does all of this relate to both our work, what we need to propose going forward in terms of our strategy, and how do all of these things connect? And this map, it might be a little difficult to see, it might be a little overwhelming, and that's sort of the point. This is a way to just show that there's so many activities going on in this community, and they're all connected in different ways. At the center, we kind of have Wannakee's creative economy, maybe we'll come up with a different term for what creative economy is in the future, but it's connected to all these different ideas. Physical spaces, like the Performing Arts Center and the Innovation Center, businesses like Gather Downtown, general arts and arts organizations. And then from there, there's a variety of other stakeholders in all of this work. And so our challenge then became, how do we think about how to center whatever we propose to this community right there in the middle in the red? Whatever we do, you know, for the village and the school district, we also want to make sure that it makes sense for the Chamber of Commerce and that there's an avenue for artists to get involved as well. So that really was kind of the basis for thinking about how we move forward with our recommendations, and how we try to get as many people involved and included in the process going forward. I'm just going to talk about those strategy recommendations.
So after several months of gathering information about what's happening nationally and regionally, as well as what's going on here in Wannakee, we want, we started thinking about what are the next steps? And it became very clear to us that while our initial charge with this project and this engagement was to design a potential organization for Wannakee, that there were key things, key steps that needed to happen before we would be ready to do that. When thinking about the complexity of all of the different stakeholders and activities, as was shown on the previous slide, as well as that key theme of lacking coordination between all of the activities that are already happening, we wanted to think about what things need to happen before a potential organization to lead all of these or champion all of these things could be successful. So that is essentially the recommendations we are giving today, is an action plan, a set of very specific steps that need to happen over the next one to three years for a potential organization to be founded. And here are the five main steps or themes for what needs to happen. Within the plan that we presented to the task force last week, there are specific steps within each of these themes. So these are the sort of broad strokes, as well as sort of a timeframe for when they need to happen. So first and perhaps foremost, our recommendation is that a position needs to be established somewhere in an organization outside of the village in order to lead these efforts moving forward. This goes back to the idea that there are so many different stakeholders outside of the village that participate in this work. And while the village is a key component and a key stakeholder in that work and a key champion, there needs to be a way for other groups to be involved and to participate in the work. So first and foremost, we need to establish a position for someone to come in and be focused solely on these efforts moving forward. Sort of concurrently, we need to formalize partnerships with some of those key stakeholder groups, and that includes participation in any potential activities, but also funding. And in particular, we landed on an idea of fiscal sponsorship for this position. It's a term, this is a term that's used in the nonprofit world. We don't mean it exactly the same way that it's used often, but essentially, there needs to be an organization that is willing to host this position, collect funds from individuals and other organizations that want to contribute, and be able to sort of incubate this position until it's ready to spin off into its own organization. Similarly, along those lines, identifying secure funding for growth. This refers not only to funding for this position over the next 12 to 18 months, but also for a potential organization moving forward into the future. So identifying grants, identifying other individual philanthropists, what, however they're going to figure out this funding model. So those are the first three, like, we've already started working on this stuff, and it needs to continue now. The next priority would be to build upon and perhaps create new opportunities for the community at large to participate. Things like the Imagination Celebration, the Art on Main Exhibition, the Community Mural, these were all things that were part of the Creative Economy Initiative and were opportunities for the community to participate and get excited about creative things happening in Wannakee. That is a key thing that needs to continue if an organization is going to be successful. And finally, playing off of that theme, we heard that organizations need marketing and advertising support. One key initiative we feel this position should start on as soon as possible, once this person is hired, is to create a platform or an opportunity for enhanced marketing and communication, both for the initiatives that they take on, and also for organizations who participate in the community economy but might not have the capacity to market their, or communicate about their own events. And so as we do to the fact that some of these things have already started, we just wanted to highlight that over the last several months, we have started to have these conversations with many of the stakeholder groups, partially during the second phase when we were gathering information about Wannakee's creative economy, but also folding in conversations of how would you and your group like to or can participate. So we've met with groups like administrators from the, from the school district, the community band, Friends of Wannakee Performing Arts, the Wannakee Community Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, the Town of Westport, and we also have upcoming meetings already scheduled with the school board, who will give a similar presentation, and the Rotary Club actually on Thursday. So just to highlight that a lot of these things are happening and ongoing, but they need to be continued if, if an organization is to be founded in the next one, three years. Just to give you a sense of the things that we will be delivering as part of our project. So as I mentioned, we gave a presentation to the task force last week, and by the end of this week, we'll be providing them with not only these presentations, but as I mentioned, the specific strategic plan, action plan, a job description for this potential position, a mission statement that we all worked on as a group with the task force and brainstormed, and several other things that are sort of going to wrap up our project with the village. And with that, any questions? Any questions?
Board members? Thank you, this has been very informative, and you guys have done a great job. Thank you.
Chris, I'd add, this is the beginning of, well, we're in the midst of the iceberg still. I've got some good news. Well, first of all, although we call them Bowleses, I guess, they call themselves Bowleses. But everyone from the Bowles Center that's here, could you just stand up so we can recognize your work? Let's give them a hand, they did a great job.[1406.01][1406.01](applause). And it's, it's been such a pleasure to work with Sarah here at Village Hall. We begged her to stay a couple months, and she said yes! So we're going to have an MBA graduate here on staff with us for two more months about. And some of the steps that you saw outlined that, that would be coming next are going to be particularly spearheaded by Sarah. So I'm thinking in a couple of months, we might be talking specifically about what exactly do we need the board to take action on to move us along in this work?
And I'll just add, one more thing I forgot to say is that we've also given that same charge to the task force when we talked with them last week, that for them to start thinking about how they can continue to be involved and sort of step up and take some, and help with some of these initial steps moving forwards along with Sarah, so.
Some of the details on the slides are important, but are hard to see. We'll get this up on our website. We have a page dedicated to the creative economy work, which has a couple of videos and some other support information that tells the story from the past work that we've done. So if you want to dig into this more, we'll get that updated in probably a blog post and Facebook post to, to let folks know that there's new and interesting materials out there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to take a quick break, Chris, to?
Sure. Further if you are exiting.
Rotate out.
If there's people that are rotating out, everybody's welcome to stay.[1496.21][1496.21](laughter).
You need the seats.
We're sorry, we've got seven seats that are open.
And they're in the back, Todd. That'll help them. And they're in the back.
Yeah, it's a safe place.[1510.01][1510.01](laughter).
There's one here.
Come around, yeah.
No.
My daughter's coming back.
And we'll move on here. So we're back to public comment. So public comments are those who want to comment on agendas, not on the, on the agenda for this evening.
Okay. I have Nyla Frye, 404 East Furlane Avenue, wishes to comment.
Do I, can I do it from here?
Yep.
How many lower-income housing units has Wannakee lost due to redevelopment? Every time a redevelopment project occurs, taking down affordable housing in Wannakee, prices for remaining houses go up. Inclusive housing makes it possible to sprinkle in affordable and worker housing into all development. Inclusive housing eliminates future problems. When affordable and worker housing is mixed with all housing developments, the problem of deteriorating areas is less likely to happen, at the same time making it easier for the school district to avoid possible unequal education in schools. While attending the listening session a few months ago, I heard Ann Held, previous president of the village of Wannakee, talk about the need for affordable housing in Wannakee for our senior citizens. It sounds to me as if the people who worked for years to make Wannakee what it is were losing, not because of death, but because of lack of affordable housing. Affordable housing is not affordable in Wannakee. There are senior citizens who want to live in mixed housing, not senior housing. Citizens living in senior housing are considered.
Is that our time?
Oh, okay.
Is that three minutes?
It's one minute for public.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was three minutes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Nyla.
I have a written comment from Elaine Loffenberg, 301 West Main Street. I'm concerned about T. Wall's listening session tomorrow. It was by invitation only, RSVP. Not all neighbors received letters. Although this is legal, it seems like he is being very shady and sneaky. Did he inform the board of this meeting?
Any others?
Nope.
Okay. Now, I'm going to let you continue, if you'd like.
Okay, I didn't realize it was one minute tonight.
Yeah, I'm going to let you continue. Since we don't have any others, I'm going to give you some time now.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Go ahead.
Citizens living in senior housing are considering moving because funds for selling their homes are depleted and they can't continue paying rent here. Others would like to sell their home and move to apartment living, but to them, it doesn't make sense. The taxes on their home is less than rent in a small apartment. In the event, maintenance isn't affordable for their home, it won't happen. Wannakee will end up with many unmaintained single-unit homes, and the village has another tip area. We are losing our young people, those working in the trades, young professionals, and the people working in our shops and restaurants can't afford to live here. Once they leave, they're gone. It's a big loss. We do want, do we want a town where all middle and low-income workers need to drive in every day? It isn't enough to have a great quality of life and wonderful schools when those who help make Wannakee what it is are pushed out. It isn't enough to have nice shops and restaurants when those working in these places can't live here. The board talks about the high cost of land driving the cost of housing. Some realize the board can work to come up with a plan to mandate affordable and worker housing in every development or redevelopment project. With determination, it can happen. It will create a community where everyone can participate. We need projects that provide the community what it needs. Due to federal mandates, municipalities are responsible to build either senior housing or lower-income housing. Wannakee builds senior housing. Why aren't we creating lower-cost housing? The village can stay on the path it's on, or it can stretch a little to help build the space for those who work, as well as those who have lived here for years and want to remain part of the community. We can continue to allow economics and money be the primary factor in development, or we can consider the needs of the citizens in our community. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Okay.
In regards to my comment, did the board get a letter from T. Wall stating that they were having this meeting tomorrow night?
So unfortunately for public comments, we can't respond.
I mean, does staff know?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were aware that there was a meeting, but there was no official word to the village or letter to the board that invited us or them.
And I'll tell our attorney that I haven't been invited.
Yeah, and this isn't, just because this isn't our meeting, this is his, so we don't really play a role, and we can't keep the developer from having a neighborhood meeting.
I understand, I understand.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Then we're gonna move on to our public hearing, discuss and take action on petition for annexation by Lone Silo North Edition LLC, annexation ordinance, rezone, and pre-annexation agreement. Brian?
So, we're not, the village staff is not asking the village board to take any action tonight. We are still working through some issues on the pre-annexation agreement, primarily related to utility service to the property. We did have a chance to speak with the property owners who filed the annexation petition. They are in agreement with the idea of not having the village board take action on anything tonight, so that we can work through these pre-annexation agreement issues. That being said, we do need to have the public hearing. Now, the public hearing is specifically related to the rezone. I have a, looking at the stack of papers that are before Julie, I have a tendency to believe that people are gonna want to comment on issues related to the annexation, not related to the rezone. That's kind of been our practice, is we've allowed comments of that nature, but for purposes of the legal, you know, this is a legal proceeding, the public hearing, and for purposes of the record, the comments on the rezone are the ones that will effectively become part of the public record. What I would tell you about the rezone itself, and again, we're not, you're not gonna be asked to take action on that. When land is annexed into the village, we have an annexation ordinance that we have to adopt by statutes. One of the actions that we take when land comes in from a town to the village is we necessarily need to rezone it, because it's within a town zoning classification. Our village code says that if we don't have the ultimate zoning already identified, we bring that property in as part of the A1 agricultural holding district. So that's what the rezone within the annexation ordinance identifies. When the, if the land is annexed, it will come in as A1 agricultural holding district. At some point in time in the future, the property owner would come to the village with more detailed plans related to how the property would be used. At that point, they would come forward with some type of land division, possibly a preliminary plat. When that happens, the more ultimate rezoning would be done, and we would go through the public hearing procedures at that time. If this developed, I mean, as an example, we have Kill Kenny Farms that is across the street on Q. When that came in, it ultimately got rezoned to a planned unit development district, so there are a number of meetings at which we discussed the zoning after the property was annexed, and then we also adopted a general development plan. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about the zoning process.
6:37, we'll open the public hearing for anyone who wants to speak, and Julie's got the forms, so go ahead.
Okay, I have Brian or Jenny Sipple, 401 North Century Avenue.
Excellent.
Okay. Chad?
Flungy.
Flungy. 1980 Manhattan Dry, Manhattan Dry, Verona.
Yeah, so I currently live in Verona, and I've been looking to move to this area, and I think what's attractive about Wannakee for particularly young professionals, young families in this area, are the communities that are already available, and the potential for this future community to be part of this community. And I think the parks and the things that they bring to the table along with these communities are very attractive for particularly for, not only myself as a young professional and someone who's gonna be starting a family, but for everybody within the community who can use the parks. So I think it's a great asset to not only grow, but to retain people within the community and help us grow together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Rebecca Allen?
I am here today, I help coordinate the Wannakee garage sales, and I've spoken to hundreds of people in the last week that have talked to me about how unique Wannakee is, and how the communities and the neighborhoods that we have provide connection for neighbors and families, and provide an infrastructure that helps make Wannakee unique, like we learned with the Bowls community, and great. And it's one of the reasons that many of them, for the first time, have considered coming to Wannakee and moving here and joining our community. And so I wanted to share that as we considered adding another neighborhood and community, that I think this would be a good one to annex, and especially the neighborhoods that provide those things like parks and pools and family spaces are something that really is a thread that comes throughout Wannakee that ties us all together.
Thank you.
Michelle Akernell?
Yep.
1950 Foggy Mountain Pass.
I'm here on behalf of...
So sorry. Go ahead.
Yep, I live in Wannakee, and I work at Aker Builders, a family company, and so this new section would definitely bring value to Wannakee. The new parks for the sports fields, the village getting more involved, or more land to help and to bring in more housing would always be very, very beneficial to the area. This area, I mean, a lot of people come to me looking for Wannakee specifically, and so to have more lots open to, for them, and to, sorry, I get nervous, public speaking. But I do get a lot of clients that want to come into Wannakee specifically for our area, our lot, or our land, and just how we put our village together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leonard Allen, 1909 Manchester Crossing?
Hi, I'm a pastor here in town. I don't live in one of these developments, I live in an older development. I used to live right downtown, across from the fire station, so I've had several experiences and different types of living in Wannakee. And I'm getting kind of annoyed at the criticisms that are being made anonymously. And we had, during the election, we had certain criticisms and promotions that were delivered to our doorstep anonymously, you couldn't even respond to whoever said it. Before this meeting, there was a lot of Facebook chatter, and I just want to respond to one of those things, and it was the identification of Tierneyville. And that's a spin-off on It's a Wonderful Life, Pottersville. The thing about Pottersville is that it was a place that people couldn't wait to leave. They tried to get out of it, they only lived there because they had to. It was a man that took advantage of a developmentally disabled Uncle Billy, and is willing to ground people down in the ground to fill his wallet. Now, to tie that to Don Tierney is really bizarre in my mind. Don makes developments that people want to live in, that sell out quickly, that have parks in them, are places that people want to live. And Don has been very generous in his parks and acrobatics and the way that he's put together. I know that Kevin on occasion has called up after Don's liability was gone, and said, "Don, we got some potholes in a road that you put in three years ago." And Don sent a crew over and fixed those potholes, and that he's been concerned. I don't think that the tying of those two ideas together, I would want to live in Tierneyville. I would want to have a pool. I would want to have big parks. I think that that's the kind of community that we want to have. And these parks are available to everybody that's in the community, not just the people that live in the new developments. And I just want to end with this. Hobset that we have the opportunity to have life that is solitary, poor, nasty, brutish, and short. That's a Pottersville. And that's not Wannakee, and that's not what Don Tierney's building. And I think that if Don is gonna build a development, I'm for it, because somebody's gonna develop it, and I would prefer it be somebody like Don than somebody like Mr. Potter.
Thank you.
Ed Schlappy, 790 West Bridge Trail?
His comments are pretty much the same as mine, I guess I did it all. I just recently, my wife and I just recently moved from Westport into Wannakee. We're in West Bridge now, and we like it there as retired people. We could have gone many different places, but we want to be in the village, we like the community. We look at the people around us that are buying homes, they're young families, they're coming in. I see them, every time I take a walk, there's somebody seems to be looking at a lot, or there's a new house going up every week almost, and if these people want to come to Wannakee and live in this type of community, I believe it's the right thing to do, and I support that kind of development.
Thank you.
Mary Heimbecker, 306 West Third Street?
I just wanted to say that I don't support the annexation at this time. I think that the houses that are available and the lots that are available should be looked at before we annex any more in. I'm understanding now that this, I read the minutes wrong, and this isn't actually an annexation, just a rezone at this point.
Well, just to be clear, the purpose of the public hearing is for the rezone, we are allowing, you know, comments about on the annexation also. What village staff is recommending for the village board is not take action tonight, because what we like to do, if we annex lands, have a pre-annexation agreement, and so the, there is the potential, and I think the likelihood, that at the May 21st meeting, the annexation ordinance and the pre-annexation agreement would be on the agenda for the village board to consider the annexation.
And I would just like to see that mixed housing be in, not just more expensive housing, but more affordable housing also, if this is annexed into the village. Some of the issues that Nyla brought up, as far as affordable housing, that the board look at this when the developers agreement is brought up.
Thank you.
Yep.
Brian Sipple, 401 North Century Avenue?
I'm just here to, as a representative, I'm a builder in Wannakee, as well as I live in Wannakee, I live in one of Don's developments in West Bridge Trail. And so I tell you, I think Wannakee is very fortunate to have Mr. Tierney putting developments in like he is. I build all over the southern part of the state, and I can assure you, there's developments that are not done anywhere near as tasteful as what Don does. I think it's been a great asset to Wannakee. I'm all for, we presently have a housing shortage, so I mean, we're in dire need of housing expansion. I've heard some comments in here that we have too many lots already. That's far from the truth. We need expansion, so hopefully everybody will be in support of that.
Thank you.
We have a few written comments. Jeanette Aker, 754 West Bridge Trail. Tierneys provide beautiful subdivisions, we work with families daily that are moving to Wannakee, he does a wonderful job with subdivisions, parks, etc. I have John Schwingle, Schwingle Builders, 7894 Wood Pond Trail, Cross Plains. I think that development is very important to the village of Wannakee, the economic value will help the village to stay as a place to look, to grow, and move to. Martin O'Connor, CEO, 1120 Connor Co., Home Again Assisted Living. The Home Again team supports and looks forward to annexation by Lone Silo North and feels it will add to continued success of the village. And Sam Kaufman, I do not support the Tierney annexation.
Okay.
Jerry Tierney is in the back. He didn't follow directions. He wasn't...
I don't want to say you just got called out, but you did, in front of the group. Did you have a comment, Jerry?
We shared Wannakee. Yeah, I, if you couldn't pass this down, maybe, yeah. I wanted to say, we put both our names on the one.
Okay.
Jerry Tierney and Don Tierney, DeForest, Wisconsin, support Tierney annexation.
Can I make a comment?
Julie, we... My only concern is if you make a comment right now, because we didn't sign in in the process, then it's gonna open up, everybody else may choose to want to have a comment, based on your comment.
Can I just write it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll allow that. It's not that I don't want anybody not to be heard.
Just add it to that one? Okay.
Did you ask to speak, Don, on that? Okay.
Well, yes, he did.
Okay, then while you're writing, you can speak, Don. Go ahead. Timer on?
It was 1990, the city of Madison came out with the Madison Area Periphery Plan Book. Everything in the North Valley, if it was ever gonna be developed, it was gonna be annexed to the city of Madison. The neighbor came down, he said, "Tierney, can you believe this?" I had no love for developers, I didn't like any of them. But I realized that here I was, the farmer, and they all came out, and they all talked sweet to me, and they all wanted to buy my land. And I was thinking tonight with the Bowls people, Bob and Jack Bowls called up, we brought them out and the 10 acres of land, because Castle Creek didn't have one piece of play equipment, and I ran into a guy named Bob Richardson, only tail Bob, he was an amazing man. He said, "Tierney, we're gonna call the Bowlses, and if they donate the 10 acres, will you donate three acres to connect it?" And that's the reason today, why the people from Castle Creek can go to Tierney Park and enjoy it. Is there anybody here from Castle Creek? Did you know that? Did you know the Bowls family? See, a lot of people don't. The other thing that's very interesting is, when we got into this business, we realized the importance of building a park system, and we were given the permission to do it. So I just hope that people, there's been some comments, and especially the anonymous stuff, nobody can put their name on it. And how many people in here know that Highway Q in the last two years, on a personal guarantee that I signed on a tip, it was a total, what do you think that, what do you think came out of the Kill Kenny tip? Not one penny was put into the parade homes or anything else. When Main Street was in tough shape, the Arboretum Office Bar, Dick Pilzner and I, we didn't take much money. $500,000 went for the office, the big water tower, Arboretum Drive was paid for by it, we only took $800. And when Main Street was upside down, I got a phone call one day, and they said, "Donny, can we use that as a donor to help?" Because where they were doing the coldest lumber, she was hurting, and we did it. So, you know, it's funny, when you really know the story, all I'm asking is, if somebody's got a notice to write to me, put your name on it. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Okay.
Should I just see it?
Just gonna give it to her, she'll do it. Thank you.
It takes a long time, several years, to go through approvals with the Army Corps of Engineers, DOT, DNR, county, etc. So, excuse me, while it may seem like there are several home sites that are available, annexing now is being forward-looking, so home sites can be available for new families looking to come to Wannakee in a few years from now.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so anybody else? Are we done? Okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Can I add one thing? I'm sorry. Is that okay? I'll be very short. I'll be short, then I'll be done.
Brian? We've gotta have you fill out one of the forms, that's... Thank you.
Should I fill it out and bring it back?
Well, if you just want to speak, I think you just have to put your name on it.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'm from the East Coast, and I moved out here.
Can you say your name first?
J. Steyer, Ironwood Drive and Kill Kenny.
Thank you.
I moved out here from the East Coast, and I would just tell you that people are coming, and they are flocking to the Midwest, because the East Coast is just sticks. So, people need housing, we want the housing, and we want the housing that Don Tierney is providing for us. We come here for the parks and the pools and whatnot. They're coming, and if Wannakee wants them, then this is what we need to do for them, because they'll go somewhere else. because they'll go somewhere else. So, it's just a fun to be taken.
Thank you. All right, I'm closing the public hearing.
I did fill out a form to speak.
Oh.
I don't have, your name?
Mike Shott.
I'm sorry. Mike Shott.
I'm not going to close it then, since you had the sheet. Go ahead, Mike.
11 West Bridge Trail in Wanake. I moved here nine years ago, but 23 years ago, I was in the excavating business, and the parade of homes was in South Bridge, you know, the basement there, and I met Don Tierney. And he says, "Go up on the hill and look out." This is the vision I have for this park. Well, since then, it's been South Bridge, Kill Kenny, Savannah Village, West Bridge, and out there. Don, bring it on.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I promise, I don't have any more else.
Okay, then I'm going to, I'm going to close the public hearing then. It's 7:50, 6:55 at this point. Okay.
So, I mean, you can have, you can have a discussion right now if you'd like. I mean, again, our recommendation is that we don't act on the, on the annexation ordinance or the pre-annexation agreement in light of the fact that we have some open issues. You don't have to necessarily take my recommendation. I mean, if you, I will tell you that when we did Kill Kenny Farms, we approved the annexation ordinance subject to approval of the pre-annexation agreement, and then the pre-annexation agreement came back. But, you know, I know sometimes for actions like this, you want to have everything done and everything in final form, and I know that you just received the pre-annexation agreement today, and so there's, can't imagine that you've had the ability to truly, you know, take it in. As I indicated in the communication that I made to you, it's pretty, there's not a lot of, there's a lot of legal, legalese in it and a lot of other information. There's some key terms and conditions, some of those are, we're still working through. So I think our recommendation still is that you wait till the 21st.
Okay. Board members' comments? Joe, anything?
I'm inclined to wait as well.
Okay.
I agree.
Reading is great.
Okay. I wasn't sure what that was on that. I'll just make a couple, couple comments that I'm going to make. One, to Nyla's comments about affordable housing, obviously, we want to have affordable housing. It's something that we're studying and we're looking at. It's not that we're ignoring that. As far as our housing stock right now, I had a conversation with Kevin about this earlier today. It was in 2013? We had roughly...
790.
Almost 800 lots that were available to build. At the end of this year, we'll have 250 for our stock, total, in the village. And from my opinion, as the lower that number goes, what's going to happen to those lot prices? They're going to go up much more, much more drastically. And as we have these developments and come through and the land that's there, we need that land for the people that do want to come to our community. I don't know if we want the whole East Coast, not in Wanake at least, but, but I do expect that we are going to have this growth. And I say that because if we're at a 250 clip, the population needs to know we're adding about 100 homes per year in the village. That gives us two and a half years of stock before we're in a crisis, and we're getting down to that. So you see, we had almost 800 not very long ago. So these, as these are annexed and brought in and the land is developed, it's to help us with the situation that we're about to have a crisis with, as far as I'm concerned. So, maybe I just gave where I sit right now with this as far as putting this and annexing this into the village, but I think it's important for the residents to understand what can happen if we don't. All those housing prices, if the land is high, what happens to the rest of the housing market? The rest of the housing market's going to go with it, it's the same thing. So, that's my concern. That's why I'm, more than likely, I'll just say I'm going to support unless something goes really drastically wrong with what we hear in the next, next meeting. Anyone else? Actually, I already asked you guys, so you're all done. Okay, so we're not taking any action, we're having, it's the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
We'll shoot the table? No, you don't.
Okay. Next, we've got licenses and permits, discuss and take action on operator license applications for Jeremy Labarre. This is really exciting, you don't want to leave.
You don't want to miss this part.
I'll wait, I'll wait for everybody to clear. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Okay, so then we've got discuss and take action on operator license applications for Jeremy Labarre and Eric Hanson. Julie?
In your packet are the applications for these two gentlemen. Both were reviewed by the police department, who recommended that they be denied. Once that recommendation happens, then the police chief schedules a police committee, which they're afforded an opportunity to come and discuss their application. Neither one took the, took advantage of appearing before the police committee. Staff, based on our policy for operator license approvals, would recommend that they be denied as well. And this is a formality to take that action. One year, they will be allowed to reapply, assuming there are no other events that would prevent them from reapplying again. My error, one of the applications was misfiled, and so that denial will be dated back to when the board should have approved or denied that license. So his year doesn't start now, it starts back when the board should have taken action.
Okay.
I looked at these. I recommend we deny the license for Jeremy Labarre effective January 15, 2018, and for Eric Hanson effective May 7, 2018.
Okay, motion by Phil Williams, second, by Joe?
Yep.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Next, we've got discuss and take action on operator license applications for Robert Zamora, Debbie Allen, and Jonathan Weeby. Hopefully, he's not here if I said that wrong.
Again, in your packet are applications for these three individuals. The police department has reviewed them, subject to our policy, and finds some acceptable. Police department recommends approval, as would staff.
Okay.
I recommend we approve the license applications for Robert Zamora, Debbie Allen, and Jonathan Weeby, subject to successful completion of an approved responsible beverage server training course and review by the Wanake Police Department.
Motion by Phil Williams?
Second.
Second by Erin Moran. Any other comments? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. New business, we've got discuss and take action on resolution allowing staff to proceed with 2018 sidewalk replacement. Kevin?
Including the packet was the resolution that I'm asking the board to approve. On an annual basis, we inspect at least 25% of the village for defective sidewalk. And what our policy says, which we adopted back in 1997, is that if they have a defective sidewalk, those are generally tripping hazards, that they're required to make those repair within 20 days, or the village will initiate the repairs on their own. If they decide to do it on their own, they're responsible for 100% of the costs. If they allow the village to continue on with our contract, which we have on, which you've awarded that contract, but this will be part of it, is that the village pays for 50% of the sidewalk repair. We have about $20,000 worth of work that we found. There's a number of other places that are public sidewalks or ramps that need to be repaired. So it's, it's well within our budget, but as we, as we do these repairs, they tend to expand and creep in terms of scope because when we get out there, it's, we get usually willing property owners that want to expand, and certainly we're usually agreeable to that as long as it makes sense from a safety perspective. So with that, I think I can answer any questions.
Can you tell everybody in the audience that's here, the process for how this is done? Is it village-wide, or do they start on one end of the village and come across, or how does that work?
At a minimum, we want to, we want to hit the entire village every four years. So as our time allows, we'll try and do more than 25%, but, so this, this last year, they did, they did the majority of the village to find some of the, really the worst ones that were creating some tripping hazards. So I think we probably did in excess of a half of the village last year, and then we'll probably try and do another half, half of the village then, again, this upcoming year.
So one of the things that's very helpful to the village is the new app, which is, what's it called, Todd?
My Wanake.
My Wanake. You can take a picture of a sidewalk that's bad, they know right where it is, and they'll get out to fix it. That's what's something that'll help them to identify those. So, correct, Kevin?
Good point.
So, other comments, board members?
Safety is important.
Safety is important. Agreed.
Can you address, there's a piece on here about repairs such as lawn parks or handicap ramps that aren't included in there. Is there any idea of how large of a scope that is?
I don't have that in front of me, but it's, it's well, you know, we have 90,000 in the budget this year for sidewalk replacement. This cost the property owners about 10,000, our share is about another 10,000. I suspect that our, we'll have another 10,000 to 15,000 of public improvements. So we'll still, we'll still be within, within budget.
Okay, any other questions, other than, look for a motion.
I move we approve the resolution allowing staff to proceed with the 2018 sidewalk replacement project as presented.
Motion by Phil Williams?
Second.
Second by Bill Random. Whisper?
Whisper.
Okay. Second by Bill Random. Any other comments? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Then finally, we have discuss and take action to schedule organizational meeting. Todd? Is that you? Julie?
Okay. Our code says that the organizational meeting is supposed to be the first regular meeting in May, but in light of some of the things that we've learned over the last few months, we think that it's time to do some review of our processes and our procedures to make sure that when we come to you for this organizational meeting, that we have those things in place. So we are asking, because of some absences at the meeting coming up, that we schedule this organizational meeting for discussion at the second meeting in June.
So what do we need to do in order, it says discuss and take action. Is that...
You can make a motion to schedule it for the second meeting in June.
Okay.
I make a motion, we schedule it for the second week in June and notice it so that more people can be involved.
Second meeting.
Second meeting.
Second meeting.
Yeah.
I'll second that, Phil.
Okay, so Phil and Joe, second? Any other comments?
I would say that a lot of this talks about public records, open meetings, those kinds of discussions, some procedural things about how to get into the building, where your mailboxes are, those kinds of things.
I think, piggybacking on that, with the discussion about the interest in access to the information and our meetings, we've already had some discussion with Keith and staff about ways that we can utilize YouTube to broad, to broadcast and archive recordings of the meetings that we are already recording. We believe that we're going to have capacity to do that, we're going to test it a bit, so perhaps when we get to our organizational meeting, we can be prepared to roll something out along those lines, too.
Be good.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Any other comments? Okay, call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. And I think one of the new board members should make this motion.
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Motion by Joe to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Erin. Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Next.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Thanks, everybody.